Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 28th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would Boy Scout Troop 702 please come up to the front of the room and lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I would like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez absent. Lee?
Here.
Gribb? Egan? Caputa?
Here.
Shuldorff?
Here.
Stinnett?
Seeing we barely have a quorum, I call this meeting in order. Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Egan are excused for tonight's meeting. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from our April 14th meeting. I will move to approve, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor? Aye. Next on the agenda, we have proclamation. Mr. Mayor?
Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution, persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, six million were murdered, Roma people with disabilities and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppression and death under the Nazi tyranny. Whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, whereas the people of the city of Florissant should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. Whereas the people of the city of Florissant should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and just society. Whereas the days of remembrance have been set aside for the people of the city of Florissant to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect for all peoples. Whereas pursuant to the act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 27th through Sunday, May 4th, 2014, including the day of remembrance known as Yom HaShah, April 28th, 2014. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thomas P. Snyder, Mayor of the city of Florissant, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 27th through Sunday, May 4th, as the days of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of survivors as well as rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we as the citizens of the city of Florissant should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs.
Thank you, Karen. I've invited Dr. Rance Thomas to join me this evening so we can reflect for a few moments on reflecting on the Holocaust and what a terrible event that was in the course of human events. In 1945, then-General Dwight Eisenhower, when he was liberating the concentration camps, he ordered his crews, his film crews, to document the liberation, liberated concentration camps, saying they'd get it all on film because someday some SOB will say it never happened. The Holocaust Museum and... Karen said is the day of remembrance. We need to remain vigilant against hatred and inequality, and I'm going to let Dr. Rance say a little bit about his organization. They're dedicated to harmony and peaceful coexistence, and I'll let Rance expound on a few thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I'm president of North County Church and Revenge of Harmony and Justice, and we're committed to social justice and promotion of understanding between individuals and races within North County and also within the central metropolitan area. I'm honored to be considered for this, to see this proclamation on behalf of the victims of the Holocaust. I accept it on basis of deprivation of life, freedom, and justice for all individuals and organizations and individuals throughout the world. It's really quite an honor and a terrible situation that occurred at some point in our history, in the history of the world.
Thank you, Rance. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have hearing from citizens. I see that no one's filled out a card, so next we'll go to communications.
Email dated April 15th, 2014, from Robin Brown regarding the rededication of the police department.
Next we go to old business, second ratings. Bill 89-97?
Motion for second.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. The request of the petitioner, I would like to amend this bill on line 43 to increase the square footage to 5,600 square feet. That was brought up at the last meeting, and Mr. Hernandez asked me if I could make that motion today.
Mr. Lee moves to amend that. I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6305 to allow for the location of retail space, dental office, and a drive-through coffee tenant for the property located at 3025 North Highway 67.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a third. Segue by Ms. Begano. Call in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B5 ordinance number 6305 to allow for the location of retail space, dental office, and drive-through coffee tenant for the property located at 3025 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez? Lee?
Yes.
Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
And Stinnett? Okay. Not used to not having all these people.
Bill 89-87 becomes ordinance number 836. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance number 89-88. Mr. Schmidt moves for a second. I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance assigning easement rights to the Metropolitan Sewer District for the installation and maintenance of sewers within the Grandview Meadows, Number 2 subdivision.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third reading, segue by Ms. Begano. All those in favor? Aye.
Order and assigning easement rights to the Metropolitan Sewer District for the installation and maintenance of sewers within the Grandview Meadows, Number 2 subdivision.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
This is Dragon who's here. Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Bill 89-88 becomes ordinance number 80-37. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions. Resolution 971.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council recognizing Councilman John Gribb for serving six years as council representative from Ward 2.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a second reading, segue by Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Aye.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council recognizing Councilman John Gribb for serving six years as a council representative from Ward 2.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third reading, segue by Mrs. Begano.
Your call.
Your call, please.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council recognizing Councilman John Gribb for serving six years as a council representative from Ward 2.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council recognizing Councilman Pat Stinnett for serving three years as a council representative from Ward 6.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a second, segue by Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Aye.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council recognizing Councilman Pat Stinnett for serving three years as a council representative from Ward 6.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third reading. I'll second that. Clerk, please pull the council.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council recognizing Councilman Pat Stinnett for serving three years as a council representative from Ward 6.
Before this resolution is passed, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for this final resolution vote.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Resolution 970 true is truly passed. Next on the agenda, we have swearing in of newly-elected officials.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Jeff. You need to go up there, too.
Well, thank you very much for the honor of being able to do this for you this evening. So, we'll keep this fairly simple and straightforward, and just after I finish this, if you just say "I do," that will be sufficient. So, do you, and state your name, solemnly swear that you possess all qualifications for your position as councilman for the city of Florissant, as prescribed by the Charter of the city of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the state of Missouri, and the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office. Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a five-minute break while we reseat the council. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have new business. We have any board appointments? Mr. Hankie.
Yes, I move to appoint Patricia Sosa to Landmarks and Historic Districts Commission.
I'll second that. All of us in favor? Aye. Mr. Lee.
And Mr. Hernandez, who couldn't be here tonight, asked if I would appoint, move to appoint Ron Call to the Landmark and Historic District.
Mr. Caputa moves for approval. I'll second's approval. All of us in favor? Aye. Is that it, Mr. Lee? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reappoint the following individuals to the Veterans Commission: Denny Kopp, 12 Lila, Dennis Perry, 1815, 15 Sherlene, Joe Conan, 1400 St. Antoine, and Gary Klassbill, 190 St. Luke.
I'll second all those appointees. All of us in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I'd like to appoint the following individual to the Environmental Quality Commission: Jacob Crum, 2413 Soundview.
Move for approval? All of us in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next on the agenda, we have bills for first reading. Bill 8990. Oh, I jumped it. I'm sorry. I apologize. Next on the agenda, we have...I hope you know what? I did jump it.
Yeah, you did. You did.
And all the...the motion.
Yes, you did. Okay.
Right in your demand.
So we need to do the public hearing.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing. Public Hearing 14-04-010.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City Council of the City of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55, rue St. Francois, on Monday, April 28, 2014, at 7:00 PM on the following proposition: To amend the zoning code regarding parking ratios and requirements, citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact City Clerk at least five days before said public hearing, but calling (839) 7630 or (839) 5142.
Mr. Barrett.
Evening, Council, and welcome, new members. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to present the parking ordinance here. I guess the first question is, why are we doing this and why are we doing it now? Essentially, the very root driving force behind wanting to revise our parking ordinance stems from water quality. Our stormwater permit, which is a requirement of the Clean Water Act, in the next five-year permit cycle, is really looking hard at municipalities and their parking ratios as they see that that's one of the larger untapped resources for improving water quality throughout the region. Let me back out in that a little bit. And while we've evaluated what is being proposed through the five-year permit cycle and all the options that we have out there, we started looking around the city and see what is the situation out there. Do we have an adequate parking situation? Do we have excess? Do we have not enough? So after looking at, you know, the upcoming push from essentially EPA, DNR, to, as part of Clean Water Act, to address these issues, we started seeing that we do look like we're pretty heavy in the city in terms of parking that's required. So that essentially pushed up our timeframe for wanting to bring this up because, at this point in time, we feel that we're presenting an ordinance that represents a win-win situation for the city, for the residents, for the businesses, and for the environment. So I just kind of want to talk about those points a little bit here, and then afterwards, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. First of all, can everybody hear me? Just fine. Thank you. Again, the driving force behind this was Clean Water Act, and so the first thing I'm going to talk about is the environment. So stormwater runoff from parking lots is a source of flooding, contamination, erosion for creeks, lakes, and rivers. And no one's going to argue that parking lots are not necessary. Parking lots are very necessary. However, if you have extraneous parking, it jeopardizes water quality with little to no benefit for the people that it's there to serve. If you look around the city, even during the busiest of times, on Saturdays at peak business hour, you're going to see that there are some parking lots that are not even half-full. And we see this particularly magnified in the larger-scale developments, large swaths of just no-one parking there. So how does this ordinance address this? Well, obviously, we're trying to reduce our parking ratios, and we're trying to reduce them according to standards nationally for what the required minimums are. So we'll get into that a little bit more. But as an example, currently, our ordinance averages about five to six-ish spaces per 1,000 square feet of building. The new ordinance averages closer to three. So that's a pretty significant reduction. And again, those are national standards that we're factoring in. So development is potentially a large benefactor of this. If you have unused parking, that's unused parking that you had to pay to build and maintain. That's otherwise usable space on a property that could be a business attracting tax revenue for the city, providing services for the residents. So under the current regulatory environment, it's very difficult for contractors and developers to plan a development. You have to fight getting in what you need for your client, the business owner. You have to go to MSD and try to get in their water quality basins, again, another aspect of the same Clean Water Act, and then you have our parking ratios. And I've heard time and time again, I just can't make it fit on this site. So we have to go somewhere else. So whether or not the development is something that we want, that's certainly a question that can be had. But clearly, developers would be in favor of reducing the ratios more in line with the ordinance, and also the clarity of the actual verbiage of what the design would be. This ordinance is a little clearer, a lot clearer, I should say, in terms of what is required to be submitted and how it will be judged. Existing businesses would benefit from this because many businesses are existing non-conforming as it is with parking, meaning that the parking ratios that exist right now came into being after the buildings and developments were constructed. If it's existing non-conforming, you can't expand upon an existing use without coming up to code standards. So by bringing the ratios down, businesses may have the ability to reinvest in their business in a way that they were not able to before. And back to the residents, the community image. If you're driving down, say, Lindbergh, and you look and see half-empty lots, the first thing that comes to your mind is, it doesn't look like everybody's doing that good. It doesn't look like business is really, really on an uptick. So by revising the parking ordinance to what are more reasonable standards, again, national standards and local standards, we'll talk about a little bit more, it'll have a fuller lot, more green space, and more dollars from the development end that could be used otherwise on the property. I'm not saying that's where they'll use it, but they have the ability to, in green space, landscaping, or on the store itself. So that's the case for the benefits and why I feel this is a win-win situation. The specifics of this ordinance, where it comes from, again, going back to the Clean Water Act, there was a Stormwater Management Group that put together a St. Louis County Stormwater Management Plan Work Group that released a document in 2011 called Addressing Legal Impediments in Mandated Impervious Areas. They had a model ordinance that came up from this study, and that model ordinance featured the input from the International, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, American Planning Association, Urban Land Institute, St. Louis County, and City of Chesterfield. Chesterfield had just wrapped up a large parking demand study. So County and Chesterfield are two local examples to augment the national standards. The ordinance that you will all be looking at is very much the model ordinance, but it has been tweaked by staff with the insights from planning and zoning and with the review comments of City Attorney John Hessel. So we do feel that this is a win-win, and if you have any questions at this time, I'm happy to try to address them.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Tim, how is this going to affect existing businesses? And I guess, let's just use an example. Let's say the Lowe's store that's up there at Lindbergh in New Halls Ferry. They've got a very large parking lot that's most of the time unutilized. Let's admit that that's probably more parking than they ever are going to need. Would that allow them to do an outbuilding on part of that lot, or will this ordinance not really affect them and only affect new businesses?
Well, that's a very good question. Yes. I think you would see that this would provide more opportunity for outlot-type of developments. That's one development that I think would have a potential green light that was not there before. So you're going from an entirely paved surface to a new building because you don't need the parking area, and the new building would have to be constructed to the latest home war codes.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if it would fit, you know, with their, but they would, they could reduce their parking, and if that was sufficient, they could build something or even expand their building. Let's put it, you know, that way, too. Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Caputa?
Yes, thank you, Ms. President. Mr. Schmidt asked one of the questions I had, but another one. Did you say that going down from five to three, then the three is the national average per, for 1,000 square feet?
That's basically an average of the requirements as they go through. There's a very long table of requirements based on use, but the average from our existing about five to, and some are upwards of six, and it averages now closer to three for every 1,000 square feet. So you'll get some that are more intensive, be up in the higher in the five or six, but the majority of them fall down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Before I close this public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Schmidt moves a public, closes public hearing, seconded by Mr. Jones. All of us in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now bills for first reading. Bill 8990.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $3,000 from account number 4150 Professional Services to account number 4132 Office Supplies for the purchase of file cabinets and one printer for the court office.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Seconded by Mr. Hankie. All of us in favor? Your Honor, would you please come up and just talk about this for a minute and answer any questions the council might have? Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much. You guys have probably seen a lot of me tonight, more than you ever normally do, and I appreciate this just because this was coming up and it's just kind of a larger issue tucked within a smaller issue here for what's being presented to you all. What we are running into is, for those of you who've been over to our government building right over here, you know our court's office is kind of one-half of the larger section of what was the bank there. And as you look along one wall, you see almost exclusively filing cabinets. And actually, thanks to our assistant prosecutor, there's even one new file cabinet just on the inside of that wall. Those are all our open files. For those of you who don't know, we are one of the top municipal courts, as far as volume goes, in the state of Missouri. We will probably, we are on track at this point to have over 30,000 new cases opened up this year. And for every one of those open cases, there needs to be space in the file cabinet. And right now, we have every single file cabinet to capacity. And so that's what we're asking for here is to get some additional file cabinets. Now, the other part of that is, we're outgrowing our court office. Thanks again to the mayor here, who's being very proactive with us and helping us kind of work through some of the space requirements, but where we are now, we can't fit in. And so we're going to look in different ways into expanding into the present courtroom over there, which is going to then reduce the size of that area for court, which is going to then push more court dockets into this room during the day and even just kind of what we have at night. We are at capacity in this room as well when it comes to our evening dockets. We, I will start sometimes quite early, around 5:30 or so, even though we're officially slated at 6 o'clock. By 6:20, realize that this whole room is filled with chairs, and there's only a couple aisles here. It will be completely filled, and it will stay filled until after 8 o'clock with people. And there'll be two of us working, disposing of cases, and there'll be people lined from this wall all the way down the hall to the clerks at the end to be able to pay and finish up their cases. We see a lot of people. We deal with a lot of different individuals from the city and from all over who come into our courts. We need to be proactive, and I appreciate, again, here, the mayor helping us in being that proactive and trying to find a space that makes sense for us. That may mean leasing space outside of the city. It may mean looking at other uses within the existing city facilities. You know, there's going to be a cost involved one way or another of how we do this. But so, like I said, this is a, this is a small space issue, actually, when the larger space issue that we're going to keep coming back and talking to you all. I just wanted to take this time to just say this is something that will be coming down the line. You know, the mayor's working very hard. Bob Russell's working hard on this, too, to come up with some solutions, and we'll just try and keep you all in the loop. And appreciate your support and any questions that you have about the courts or the process or anything going on here. Feel free to give me a call. I'm always available, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee moves for a second. I'll second that. All of us in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $3,000 from account number 4150 Professional Services to account number 4132 Office Supplies for the purchase of file cabinets and one printer for the court office.
Mr. Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez, Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankie?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $3,000 from account number 4150 Professional Services to account number 4132 Office Supplies for the purchase of file cabinets and one printer for court office.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankie?
Yes.
Bill 8990 becomes ordinance number 8038.
Judge, thanks.
You're welcome, Your Honor.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next on the agenda, we have council announcements. Mr. Lee.
I just want to remind everybody that this weekend is Valley of the Flowers Weekend, and festivities will actually begin on Thursday this year with some circus performances for the school kids. And my favorite part of the family function is the Saturday at the Egan Center, the family-friendly venue, followed by the parade on Sunday, and of course, all day down at the Knights of Columbus Park. But I also want to make our two council people aware that we have a policy on council, that the new council people are responsible for the weather. So the two of you, what I thought would do is split it up, and one of you can be responsible for the first half of the weekend, one for the second half of the weekend. Or, if you prefer, one could be responsible for the weekend, and another one could do Fall Festival. It'll be up to you. So you work that out, and just let us know who's going to, who's going to take responsibility, and we'll go from there. So...but I hope everybody gets a chance to come out to the Valley of Flowers. It's a great weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Hankie?
Yes, I would like to take a couple minutes here and recognize a few people and say some thank-yous. First, I want to thank Pat Stenit for the job he did representing the citizens of Ward Six, and hopefully, Pat, I can build on the work that you've done. I'd like to recognize the council for the welcome that they've given me, and I will take most all of you up on your offers of help in the transition because, believe me, I'll need it. I'd like to recognize my brother Tom, my brother Al, my sister Jackie Frida for the help that they did and the support they've given me. It meant a lot to me, and it's part of the reason I think I'm sitting here, right here today. And, by the way, my whole family, all three live in Ward Six, so it's a good start. I would like to thank all their friends, a lot of them are in the audience tonight, that did a lot of work for me. I'm not going to recognize all the names, or I'm trying to keep this a little short. But also, I would like to thank all the residents of Ward Six. I feel the obligation, I feel the responsibility that goes with it. It doesn't make any difference how you voted now. Basically, voting is a moot point. I feel a responsibility to all the residents of Ward Six. There's an obligation, and I promise you that I will do my best for all the residents of Ward Six. And if you ever think I'm not, my phone number's public, you know, give me a call. And last, but certainly not least, most important person in the room to me, I want to thank my wife, Barbara. It seems to me that as we go through life, life's an adventure, and it's what you make it, but my adventures and what you make it always involves more work for her. So I couldn't have done it without you, and I'm not going to embarrass you in front of everyone here by telling you that I love you, but I will say, I sure like you a heck of a lot. Thanks, Barb. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hankie. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Ms. President. Yeah, first thing, I would like to congratulate Councilman Timmy Jones and Councilman Gerard Hankie, and welcome aboard, and looking forward to working with the both of yous. And also, I would like to reiterate about the Valley of the Flowers this weekend, especially the car show that is at 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM Saturday. Very nice car show, one of the best around, so hopefully, everybody can enjoy it. And for Councilman Jones, Councilman Hankie, the weather can't get no worse than what I predicted it last year, so good luck with that one. So it can't be no worse. And so, but congratulations, and looking forward to working with yous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody on the council, and I'd also like to put a shout-out to some of the guys that helped me on my campaign, which was my family, friends, and my neighbors, the ones that brought me up here to where I'm at now. And I'm not going to forget where I came from. I'm going to be out there in Ward Two, which I already have been for, I think, the day after the election, I've been on the streets. I want to thank any Ward Two people that's watching this at home right now. I'm going to give you what you wanted, and that is going to be service. I know I've got big shoes to fill. Big John told me to call him anytime I get stuck on something, which I appreciate that. John is a good man, and I hope I can keep up what he did. That's about all I have to say. I'd like to thank all you guys, too, for warmly welcoming me, especially my buddy, Jeff Caputa. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I would like to thank Paul Maganelli and the Knights of Columbus and the city staff for doing a great food truck event last Wednesday at the Knights of Columbus. It was the second time we had a food truck event, and the city got involved this year, and the Knights did a great job, Mr. Maganelli and the city, and I know there are three more coming down the road. I also like to thank the city staff. Last night, you know, everybody knows the weather was pretty bad, and about 2:00 AM, an elderly couple on St. Edith and Ward Five had a easement tree struck by lightning and came down in front of their house, and they couldn't, couldn't get out of the house, and ended up getting out the back door and to a relative's house. And when I got up for work this morning, I saw it, and I got ahold of the city staff right away, and everything was cleaned up by 10:00 AM this morning. So I want to thank our city staff, Karen Goodwin, and the police dispatcher, and Andy Quinones, and the guys in Public Works and Parks that got out there and had this cleaned up by 10:00 AM. It really makes our city special. I would like to thank Mr. Gribb and Mr. Stenit. I didn't get to do that last meeting. Mr. Gribb served the city for 26 years, and he's in a select group when it comes to the terms of public service. And a lot of people serve that long, 20 years on P&amp;Z, and then six years on the council. And I also like to thank Mr. Stenit for his involvement on the city council over three years. And I welcome Mr. Hankie and Mr. Jones, and I congratulate them, and I look forward to working with both of them. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Jones and Mr. Hankie. Looking forward to working with you and the rest of the council to advance the progress of our community. And I also would like to, I wrote a letter thanking Mr. Gribb for his service. It cited the same things the president did about his two decades-plus on the planning and zoning and two terms on the city council, helping in great measure to advance the progress of our city, and that everybody should respect his investment of time and talents, which resulted in a great volume of work that has benefited Florissant, and that noted that between us, we had over 60 years of service to the city. I also wrote a letter to Mr. Stenit, thanking him for his service to the city of Florissant on the city council and on the Valley of Flowers Committee, and for all the other community organizations that he contributes to. And as a fellow Vietnam veteran, I appreciated his active-duty service to our nation and his membership in the local veterans organizations. I have greetings to the citizens of Florissant from a man named Sanphal Sukshan. He's the consulate general of the nation of Thailand, and he was visiting in Florissant with the, I can't pronounce this word. It's on Lindsay Lane. It's, it's just too long. It starts with PH, and it's the Thai Buddhist temple of Greater St. Louis on Lindsay. They were celebrating the Thai New Year festival called Song Krang. And you know, they promote some common threads that they were, they celebrate water, they celebrate respect for their elders, and they also celebrate spring cleanup, which is kind of appropriate for Valley of Flowers time, timing. And they also have a, they also had a queen crowning. They had nine candidates from Missouri and Southern Illinois. The neighbors of this peaceful establishment on Lindsay Lane joined the Thai pilgrims from all over Missouri and Southern Illinois for a feast, and then a Thai cultural festival, which, like I said, included the crowning of their queen. The consulate general and our host wished me to share with the residents of Florissant their good wishes, that they admire the welcoming nature of our people. And I told them that St. Philippine made the same observation 127 years, 120, well, 200 years ago, that Florissant had the quality of hospitality. It's really nice to see a reflection of your beautiful community in the eyes of others that are visiting our town for something as festive as that. I'd like to thank the Florissant Rotary Club for installing the bike racks. They have 10 new bicycle racks, mostly on St. Francis Street, but they also put one at the police department. And according to Rotary Club President Howard Nimmens, he and his fellow Rotarians noticed more and more cyclists riding into Old Town with no place to park their bikes, and the Rotarians weren't the only ones with this observation, so we collaborated to install the bike racks to complement Old Town and also the Great River Greenway Trail that winds its way from the river to the shrine. And so we're very grateful to the Rotary for installing the bike racks here in Old Town Florissant. You've probably heard some of the radio commercials, maybe seen a TV commercial or two. We've been promoting the Valley of Flowers in our community in the media, and we're going to continue to do that on Friday. We're actually going to have radio and TV here in Florissant at the Egan Center. Starting at 11:00, we're going to have both radio and TV going at the same time. KST, Channel 5, Show Me St. Louis will be broadcasting live from the James J. Egan Center on Friday, May 2, from 10:00 AM to 11:00. And Show Me St. Louis co-host Julie Tristan and Corinne Savitsky will be, will set up where the food and circus tent will be. And I welcome everyone to come out and help kick off the 52nd Annual Valley of Flowers Festival on television this Friday. And then Martin Kilcoin will join us from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on KTRS, the Big 550, and they'll be broadcasting from the ice rink, from one of the penalty boxes there in the ice rink. That doesn't have any symbolic significance whatsoever. It's just a handy place to set up the radio equipment. So anyway, join us at the Egan Center on Friday at 10:00 AM for TV and radio. See you there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we adjourn, I'd like to let everybody know that we are, I will be making a motion to go in a closed session after adjournment tonight. Mr. Schmidt moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Jones. All of us in favor? Aye. Now, I would like to make a motion to go in a closed session, seconded by Mr. Jones. Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankie?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.